Good evening and welcome to the Monday, June 26th, meeting of the City Council of Bella Vista. We'll have an invocation from Pastor Mount followed by a pledge of allegiance. If you please rise.
Good evening. Reading from Proverbs 27:17. "Iron sharpeneth iron, so a man sharpeneth the countenance of his friend." May we pray. Father God, I thank you for these men and women gathered here tonight. They gather here in your name in order to bring discernment and assurance to their community, to the state, and to our country. We need you, God, and we ask that you answer when we ask which way we should go and what we should think and how we should gather together as men and women of faith to bring the best product possible. We thank you, God, for all good things that flow from my hands in the name of Jesus Christ, our risen Savior. Amen.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll do a roll call of council. Alderman Barr?
Yes, present.
Alderman Lloyd, here. Alderman Flynn?
Here.
Alderman Wozniak?
Here.
Alderman Fowler?
Here.
Alderman Anderson is absent.
Thank you. We have no citizen input this evening, so we'll move on to the approval of the May 22nd minutes. Hopefully, you've all had a chance to read them. Are there any errors or omissions? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Up to you, sir.
Alderman Flynn?
Approved.
Alderman Lloyd?
Yes.
Alderman Fowler?
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak?
Yes.
Alderman Barr?
Yes.
Carrie, 5-0.
Thank you. I'd entertain a motion to suspend the rules and read all ordinances and resolutions on the agenda by title only.
So moved.
Second.
No, I'll go back and get it. So we'll finish this one.
Okay. Alderman Barr?
Yes.
Alderman Flynn?
Yes.
Alderman Lloyd?
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak?
Yes.
Alderman Fowler?
Yes.
Carrie, 5-0.
Thank you. I'll go back to the monthly financial reports we have this evening and at the back of the room as well. The monthly, or sorry, the financial reports for the two and five month period ending May 31st, 2017. We are very healthy in our reserves. They have continued to grow. We're up to almost 7.4 million. I will tell you that I have asked the department heads to meet with Carrie Elston, our finance director, so that she can start to put together a five-year finance plan and to also look at some of the short-term projects that we've been talking about. And it is my hope that at the work session in August, we are going to be able to have a preliminary discussion with all of you as we look towards the future. Does everyone still like the layout of the forms? They've changed a bit because we've put on the right-hand side the percentage of annual budget remaining so that you can see where we are. If it's low, it doesn't necessarily mean that that line is in trouble because all the expenditures may be down for that year. But if you have any questions, please do sit down with Carrie and go through it.
That makes it much easier to figure out actually where you're at. You know, you can take a quarter of the year and it's X amount of percentage and a third of the year instead of having to figure out the numbers in your head. You can just look and see where you're at.
I agree.
If you're low, you haven't spent it yet, or there's probably reason. If you're high, you spend something early. Makes it a lot easier than just trying to go through and cipher everything out every time. I like it.
Great, I'll give that feedback to her. Thanks, Jim. So a motion to approve the financial, oh, sorry.
You don't need that.
Oh, you don't need it. Okay. All right, let's get down to the business at hand here. The first is an ordinance repealing Section 103-49H of the municipal code regulating guard opening limitations and for other purposes. This is the second reading. Is there any discussion? I'd entertain a motion to take this to third and final, and we can put it to bed tonight.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion?
Motion to suspend the rules and go to third.
Ah, yes, thank you. So I need a motion to suspend the rules and go to a third and final reading.
I make the motion and we suspend the rules and go to third reading for this ordinance.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All right, do a roll call vote. Alderman Lloyd?
Yes.
Alderman Flynn?
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak?
Yes.
Alderman Fowler?
Yes.
Alderman Barr?
Yes.
Carrie, 5-0.
For the third time, repealing Section 103-498H of the municipal code regulating guard opening limitations and for other purposes. Is there any further discussion? Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Alderman Barr?
Yes.
Alderman Fowler?
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak?
Yes.
Alderman Lloyd?
Yes.
Alderman Flynn?
Yes.
Very good, 5-0.
Thank you. The next is an ordinance amending the Bella Vista Code of ordinances to add a Section 28-4 of Article 1 in general of Chapter 28, utilities, to require newly erected outdoor lighting fixtures elevated at higher than eight feet above the ground to be shielded. This is the second reading. Discussion, I believe?
I have an amendment.
You have an amendment?
Yes, I have an amendment which would amend the proposed Section 28-4 to add subsections D and E which shall read as follows. D, this section shall not apply to streetlights caused to be erected by the city and operated at its expense. And E, this section shall only apply to those portions of the city zoned R1.
Okay.
Can I ask her a question?
Yes, please.
So you're only going to offer the second part of that right now? You intend to offer the amendment about the definition of outdoor lighting fixtures?
Oh, that's not on this piece of paper. Sorry.
It's right there.
At the top.
Oh, yes, excuse me. And under number one, outdoor lighting fixture, we are deleting the automatically controlled wording. So an outdoor lighting fixture would be an outdoor artificial illuminating device, whether permanent or portable, used for illumination or advertisement, including searchlights, spotlights, and floodlights, whether for architectural lighting, parking lot lighting, landscape lighting, or street lighting. My apologies.
Just your clarification. So you're moving to amend the items that's presented in this written document here?
That is correct.
Okay, may I have a second?
A second.
Okay. Discussion.
Well, it's got nothing to do with that, but so all of a sudden, if somebody wants a light for security, they can't have it. Like the lady who had a peeping tom, who he got caught, who would like a light for security, so she's not going to be able to have it. Dark neighborhood has had car burglaries before. A recommendation was made that, you know, maybe a little streetlight wouldn't hurt, and now they won't be able to have it. Or if I just want a light because I came from an area, another city, that had problems and I like a light, but because it's going to shine maybe one or two houses up the street, I can't have it. And for 30 or 40 years, light has been leaking into bedrooms all over the world, and all of a sudden, you can't have it. Every place you go, every place you stay, light has leaked in somewhere. You've gotten used to it. If you happen to move in close to a railroad after about six months, you can't tell it's there. If you have a close, move in close to an airport after a few months, you can't have it there. And then what's the next? Covers on your headlights so when you turn around a corner, it won't shine in somebody's bedroom? This is a little much. This is a little much. We already restrict people a whole bunch of different ways. This is a little much. You know, we've been in the city for 10 years, and all of a sudden, here it is out of nowhere. How many people really have a problem with this? A solution is maybe you put your curtains just a little higher in the bedroom and maybe just a little bit wider. Blackout curtains is a little bit of a stretch. And this letter here is written like, almost like maybe a real estate person may have written it, to sell another house or two. And I'm sorry, I can't support this in any way, shape, or form.
Okay. Linda?
I propose this ordinance for several reasons. I've heard from numerous people who have issues with the lighting. And to me, it's in accordance with our strategic plan, which under the vision statement says that we value our natural setting. And under the value statement, livability is paramount, a paramount, and our rural small-town atmosphere is mentioned. I believe that citizens of Bella Vista are entitled to enjoy their own property without intrusions from adjoining properties. A Bella Vista resident should be able to move into a home or design and build one and enjoy that home. They should not have to deal with complete nighttime illumination from a neighbor's dust to dawn or otherwise intrusive light. They should not have to install blackout shades to watch television in their living rooms or to be able to sleep at night, and they should be able to sit out on their deck and see the stars. This is a rural, small-town community. This is not downtown Rogers. And that was the reason for the proposal, and it was not only my idea.
Well, again, you've just got a few people out of 30,000 or 13,000 households. I don't think that justifies going quite this far.
Anybody else?
Questions on the amendment at this point, but there were further discussion on the ordinance as a whole.
So are there any questions on the amendment?
I had one. I was wondering what the thinking was in the part of it having to do with R1. It would just be an R1.
I had a discussion with the Townhouse Association general manager, and whereas most of his lights are really 60 watts, some of them are slightly over eight feet tall, and they are rounded globes. So rather than get into wattage and this and that, which would cause a enforcement, potential enforcement issue, I felt making it apply to R1, which would exclude commercial zones also, which have other lighting requirements and the Townhouse Association properties.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, so we'll vote on the amendment.
Okay, roll call vote. Lloyd?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Nope.
Fowler?
Yes.
Barr?
No.
3-2.
Mayor, you may choose to vote if you so desire.
I choose not to vote.
All right, so the amendment fails. Three in favor, two against. So that brings you back. You're still now on second.
Second reading?
Second reading. There could be further debate on the ordinance as a whole.
All right, so we go back to the original second reading. Is there any discussion?
Same argument.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Yeah, you know, I think, you know, probably the intent is good, but I'm really skeptical of regulation in this particular regard. And I'll be honest, I really don't have a real strong feeling one way or the other. I haven't had anybody approach me, talk to me, email me, or anything on this topic. And I think management of this by the city is full of landmines, and it's going to be very difficult to do. And I just, I don't, I just wonder about injecting the city in between the conversation of two neighbors over whether a light is too bright and shining in the house or not. I don't, I just really don't know that that's where we need to be. I think this falls a little bit more under a civil issue between neighbors. And it's kind of sad today. I mean, we, there's a situation out in my general area between two neighbors, and, you know, it'd be easy for the city to interject into the conversation. And I actually brought it up to another neighbor of mine, and he says, what the hell happened to people where they can't walk across the street and have a conversation with each other, or walk next door to their neighbor and figure it out? And I really think this is where this needs to be. And also, if we want to have a conversation about lights in the city and residential housing areas, maybe the way to approach this is to go to Gould Evans and have them put it in the conversation that they're going to have with the residents of the city of Bella Vista and see how important it is to them and see where that falls on the radar screen. And if there's a strong feeling we need to do something like this, then maybe that's Gould Evans can come back with a recommendation, and then we can consider an ordinance after that point. So, you know, that's, that's where I am with it right now.
Okay, anyone else?
Well, if we have to go to the residents to have them get stirred up, I think it's a problem. They need to be coming to us if they have a problem.
Yeah, it's just a platform. So is, I'm sorry, is there more discussion?
Yeah, sure. Let's keep on.
I agree with you. Gould Evans is a great opportunity. They're going to look at everything within the city of Bella Vista with the comp plan. And so if there's a real issue out there that can be addressed through ordinances.
And you're on the comp plan? Okay. Anyone else?
Just one quick comment. The intent was not to at all inhibit the personal property rights of someone to put up their own security light to light up their own property. The concern is them putting up a security light, the damages, the life and livelihood of someone next door.
Is it appropriate this time to make a motion to table this, this particular topic for consideration at a further date possibly?
That motion's in order, Mayor. If it's to a date, to the date of the future, we need to know what that date is, or if it's just indefinitely, that would take it off the agenda.
I just make a motion to table.
Indefinitely.
Indefinitely, yes.
Indefinitely.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is there further discussion? All ready, and we'll go to vote.
Questions on the motion to table indefinitely?
Okay.
I have a question. What are the implications of tabling indefinitely? I mean, can you bring it back up two months from now?
You can, you can bring it back in its current form. Any alderman can always offer it anew at any point, even next month, if they wanted to bring it back up. It'd just be back on a first reading if you did it that way. It's not gone forever. If someone wants to bring this back up, talk to me, and I'll get you through the procedures. But if it's tabled indefinitely, it will not appear back on the agenda at any time until someone takes some action to do that.
Okay, any other questions?
I'd much rather see it die, but I guess I could live with indefinitely.
Okay.
It seems to me it's really the same difference. The proposal was stronger with the amendment than without the amendment. So once we vote down the amendment, it's going to third reading, and it's kind of limping to third reading anyway, so it's, anyway.
You know what? I'll withdraw it and not make a motion. Let's go to third reading. Can we do that?
No, that's out.
Okay, okay.
Table it or kill it.
You're already there.
Okay, are we ready to vote on the tabling?
Okay, way we go.
Okay. Alderman Lloyd?
No.
Alderman Flynn?
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak?
Yes.
Alderman Fowler?
Yes.
Alderman Barr?
Yes.
It's tabled.
Motion carries. Okay. The next ordinance, this is the first of three pieces of legislation this evening regarding our new municipal court. This ordinance is waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with MSI Consulting Group, LLC, in the amount of $22,300 for the purchase of district court case management software and product support through the remainder of the calendar year 2017. As I mentioned at the work session, Mr. Kelly and others had met with Bentonville and got a really good feel for what had to happen in order to make this occur on the 1st of January of next year. And they came back and they worked backwards, and they realized that we had to move fairly quickly on all these issues this evening. We had our IT fellow, John Merkel, have a look at this and the system that Bentonville uses. Virtual justice is used by hundreds of cities in this state. It seems to be the preferred system. We spent some time talking to P Ridge because they also use it. And so we're coming to you this evening to waive the requirement of a formal competitive so that we can put this into play. Is there any discussion on this? Okay, I'd entertain a motion to suspend the rules and move to third and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, Wayne.
Okay. All right, Alderman Lloyd?
Yes.
Alderman Flynn?
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak?
Yes.
Alderman Fowler?
Yes.
Alderman Barr?
Yes.
Carrie, 5-0.
Thank you. Excuse me, the next one.
Motion to adopt.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. I'm sorry. I'll read it third time. Waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with MSI Consulting Group, LLC, in the amount of $22,300 for the purchase of district court case management software and product support through the remainder of calendar year 2017. Is there any discussion? May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Alderman Barr?
Yes.
Alderman Fowler?
Yes.
Alderman Lloyd?
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak?
Yes.
Alderman Flynn?
Yes.
Carrie, 5-0.
Thank you. The first resolution of the evening is a resolution authorizing the mayor and clerk to enter into a contract with Marion Company for the renovation of court facilities located at 612 West Lancashire Boulevard and for other purposes. In your package is all the quotes that we received, and it's broken out by each area of the quote. You'll see the demolition, the wall construction, doors, framing, et cetera, all the way across to the total. The low bid was with Marion at 104,405. And Chris, I believe there's a contingency that you've built in as well. Is that 15% or 10%? 10%? So it comes up to 114,000. Is there any discussion or questions for Chris? Okay, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve, please.
So moved.
Second.
All right, excuse me. Alderman Wozniak?
Yes.
Alderman Fowler?
Yes.
Alderman Barr?
Yes.
Alderman Lloyd?
Yes.
Alderman Flynn?
Yes.
Carrie, 5-0.
The next is a resolution authorizing the mayor and clerk to enter in agreement with APAC Central for the construction of a northbound, left-turn lane at the Mercy Way and US Highway 71 intersection, amending the 2017 budget and for other purposes. Again, in your packet, there's a letter from Craft and Toll. All the, all the bids are laid out. APAC Central is the cheapest. You should note that the engineer's estimate was just a little over $49,000, and we did have some increased cost, Chris, from state, plus everybody's so busy these days, the prices have gone up. But nevertheless, I have spoken to some of the merchants that are up on the, on the two strip malls. They're very, very excited that they'll be able to have this access. We have had a lot of accidents at that intersection as people try to turn left when they shouldn't. Others go all the way down to Alden by Dr. Yost, do a U-turn and come back so that they can get in. That, too, is, is rather dangerous. And Chris, we're hoping to get this in before school starts?
I don't believe the construction period would allow for that.
Okay.
Due to the bidding process and the many contract approvals, but as quickly as possible.
As quickly as possible? Okay. Are there any questions for Chris or myself? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Alderman Barr?
Yes.
Alderman Fowler?
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak?
Yes.
Alderman Flynn?
Yes.
Alderman Lloyd?
Yes.
Carrie, 5-0.
Thank you. The next resolution, before we go on to it, we will go to an open public hearing on the condemnation of this property that's located at 9276 Suitsus Drive in the city of Bella Vista. Is there anyone present who would like to speak? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. This resolution reads as follows. Condemning and ordering the raising and removal of a dilapidated, unsafe, and nuisance structure owned by Robert Lee Jackson located at 9276 Suitsus Drive in the village of Bella Vista and for other purposes. Discussion.
Good question.
Well, I assume Mr. Sonos or someone in the city will retain a file with the photographs
and whatnot in case there's complaints later on.
Oh, we have lots of photographs, yes. They're written.
Mr. Flynn, to address your concern, the photos that you see depicted in the staff report are already a part of the city's database with iWorks. It's our permit and code enforcement complaint management software. And yes, to answer your question.
Yeah, I assume that was the case. I just wanted to make sure.
I did speak with Mr. Jackson last week. He indicated to me that he's been talking to Chief Sims, offering the house as a control burn and training exercise for the fire department. Chief, I understand that all the paperwork has been pulled together, and it requires Mr. Jackson's signature. He was supposed to be in the office today to see you, but didn't appear?
That's right.
Okay. I did stress to Mr. Jackson, by doing this and then cleaning up the mess afterwards, he would avoid having a lien for a raising on his tax roll. And he fully understood it. And Chief, you have the papers here this evening in the event that Mr. Jackson did come? Okay. So hopefully, he will come and sit with you and sign the paperwork, and we can move on. Are there any other questions?
I don't have any questions. I'd just like to say, it sounds like things are moving forward on Mr. Jackson's part with his contact with the city and stuff. I just want to say that I read every piece of documentation, both from the city and Mr. Jackson. It was pretty extensive and made a couple trips up there. And, you know, just in case people are wondering how at least, you know, one person feels about it, it is definitely time to move forward. This is a, it's an accident waiting to happen. You know, it's, it's time for it to come down way past time, so.
It's been in the same condition for the last two years. He's had plenty of opportunity to actually act upon his permits, and he hasn't done anything by the looks of it, and so.
We were right here September of 2015. August of 15, and he was given the opportunity then to pull a permit, which he did. Very little was done, and I think you're absolutely right. The time has come.
City's acted in good faith for its part. He has not, and so.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, we'll go for the vote then, please.
Need a motion.
I thought we already had it, I'm sorry.[1717.34]
I make the motion.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
Alderman Flynn?
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak?
Yes.
Alderman Fowler?
Yes.
Alderman Barr?
Yes.
Alderman Lloyd?
Yes.
Carry five zero.
The next resolution, amending the 2017 city budget to authorize one full-time position of court clerk for the Bella Vista Department of the District Court, and to provide funding for court-related startup and operational expenses. In your packet is a spreadsheet that has been prepared by our finance director, and the second page breaks out two of the items where it says, "See attached list for equipment over $1,000 and equipment under $1,000." As I mentioned at the work session, the combined setup cost is about $290,000. However, when you look at what Bentonville intends to charge us versus what we will pay running our own court system, we can do it cheaper by some $30,000 every year. Now, that will diminish over time as costs go up, and it's assuming that Bentonville will never raise their price, which is probably not quite correct. The payback, as I mentioned at the work session, is long. It's like the gas pumps where it's 40 cents a gallon cheaper. You've got to pump a lot of gas to get your payback, but it's convenient, and it gives us an opportunity to serve our constituents better, and the same is here. We will have the court here. People will not have to go to Bentonville. They can pay their fines here. Our officers, when they go to court, are in our city, not 10 miles away in case something happens and Chief Graves suddenly has to pull all the troops in. It's a bit of a tight stretch. So I do believe in my heart of hearts that this is the right thing to do, and I'd be willing to have further discussion if everybody, if anybody wishes to do so.
Really, no discussion. I'd just like to say, I'm, I'm personally excited about it. I think it's one more step in the continuum of, you know, just Bella Vista, true city, you know, that is responsive to its residents. And, you know, I think when we see that, they see we have our own city court, I think they'll feel good about it also. And like you said, it saves a lot of time, a lot of resources going down to Bentonville, both from the residents and from our police department, Jason, et cetera. So it's, this is a really great thing.
Now, there is one portion of the cost that is still outstanding, as I mentioned to you. The way that we're going to approach it with the permission of the judge is it'll be a clean break. And there will be a certain number of files and warrants that will still be in Bentonville that will be processed by them, and we're working with them to determine what that cost might be. The judge has agreed that some of the older cases that are not serious, he is willing to waive, if that's the right term?
You too. To quash old, stale warrants.
Okay.
Be technical about it.
And on the 1st of January, Chief Graves is going to assign two officers to work on those other warrants that are not quashed, so that we can quickly reduce the inventory and lower the cost of Bentonville having to process on our behalf. So I just want to be very upfront that there is another cost sitting out there. I'd also publicly like to thank Mr. Kelly, because he was the one who started this ball rolling even before we had the call on October the 11th from the mayor of Bentonville saying the price was going up. I think it was about a month or two before that you, I prepared a resolution that...
It was along the same time. I can't remember exactly, but it was, it was all basically at one scenario where it all kind of happened.
I thank you to do it. I thank you publicly. It's great. Okay, if there's no more discussion, then a motion to approve, please.
She'll move.
Second.
Wayne?
Okay. All right. Alderman Lloyd?
Yes.
Alderman Flynn?
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak?
Yes.
Alderman Fowler?
Yes.
Alderman Barr?
Yes.
Carry five zero.
Thank you. The final resolution, supporting federal and state legislation to ensure the proper assessment and collection of sales tax from all internet online sales, thereby creating a fair and free market for all businesses and consumers regardless of the location of the business from which the purchase was made. We have been asked, every city has been asked, to pass this resolution. It is from the municipal league. As you know, there has been little traction at the federal level. Congressman Womack has definitely said that he's on board. Senator Cotton and Senator Bozeman have not said what they would like to do. The intent here is, after I sign this, we will send it to our federal representatives, and we will send it to our state representatives. I will tell you that some people believe this to be an additional tax. It is not an additional tax. It is a tax that our brick and mortar must charge today, but because of oversight and law, the internet does not. Amazon has freely agreed back in March to begin collecting for our state. And in May, for our tax revenues, we saw an increase year over year of $40,000. Other cities saw similar increases. The speculation at this point by the municipal league and ourselves is that this is probably the March collections by Amazon. However, I caution, this is a dot, so we've got to keep watching it. If it's the same in June, it's a line. If it's the same in the next one, then it might be a trend. But I'm asking that you give this due consideration and pass it this evening so that we can join our fellow cities in the area and push this forward. Is there any discussion at all? May I have a motion to approve?
She'll move.
Second.
All right. Alderman Barr?
Yes.
Alderman Fowler?
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak?
Yes.
Alderman Flynn?
Yes.
Alderman Lloyd?
Yes.
Carry five zero.
Just a couple of pieces of new business. It's more to do with vacations. I'm going to be away for two weeks in July, and I will miss the work session and the regular session, as I have in previous years. And our mayor pro tem, John Flynn, has once again agreed to step in and take the chair, so thank you, John, I appreciate that. Not sure about anyone else being away, I think, Mr. Barr?
I will be on orders for the military for the last two weeks of July at Fort Leve North, Kansas.
Okay. Isn't that where the prison is?
It is.
You're not going to the prison?
Which side of the fence?
The good side.
Is there anyone else that's going to be away towards the end of the month? Okay, thank you. Meetings and announcements. The next city council work session will be July 17th at 5:30 in the city hall conference room. And the next regular meeting of the city council will be Monday, July 24th at 6:30 here in the Legion. And the planning commission, I believe, has been canceled. That was scheduled for the 29th, and the planning commission regular meeting for July the 10th has also been canceled. And the board of adjustment, or is it the zoning?
Board of Zoning Adjustment.
Oh, okay, so they will meet now? Okay. And when is that?
It's going to be the 3rd Wednesday.
3rd Wednesday of July? Okay, the board of... Okay, you're not sure of the date? But the 3rd Wednesday?
19th.
19th, thank you. And the board of zoning adjustment will meet? Okay, fair enough. And they're meeting at city hall? At what time? At 7 o'clock? Okay, fair enough. Is there anything else anybody wants to bring up? Thank you, we are adjourned.